I'd like to call over the Maplewood City Council meeting for January fourteenth. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Councilmember Crater?
Here.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Here.
Mayor Greenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Pardini?
Here.
Councilmember Phillips?
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Here.
Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, if form is present.
Next item is the approval of the council agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Are there any modifications?
I was wondering if we could make a modification.
Uh...
How do I do that? Do I say it here or do I need to email it?
Uh, is it something you'd like to bring up in council communication or is it a change to the agenda?
Sorry. I was talking, sorry. I was talking about minutes.
Okay. Uh, then, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Item number six is a public hearing to hear citizens' comments on... Is there... Okay. Hear citizens' comments on a request by Carlos Lardizabal. Hope I got that right. Owner of Casa Maya Restaurant located at twenty-seven twenty-six Sutton Boulevard for a full Sunday liquor license. Is there anyone that would like to speak at this public hearing? Anyone at all? Okay. We'll move on to item number seven, which is a public hearing to hear citizens' comments on a request by Christian Lehman of Asador Del Sur Restaurant to be located at seventy-three twenty-two Manchester Avenue for a full Sunday liquor license. Is there anyone that would like to speak here? Or does the owner want to say anything? Uh, okay. Then the public hearing, that public hearing is closed. Item number eight is the public forum. Is there anyone that would like to address the council, please?
Thank you. My name is Stephen Mills and I've been a Maplewood resident since nineteen eighty-seven and, um, I'd like to offer you my help in terms of your budget. I looked at that budget, all hundred and twenty-seven pages and, um, I talked to Barry about this before, like, he said that they were three million in debt and they have a railroad crossing problem. I had some ideas that I would like to share, but not in this forum actually. In another time, but what I wanted to talk about tonight was that, um, there was a, um, I don't know if you remember, down at the Maplewood Creek area, there was a business there, um, the video store.
Family video, yeah.
Yeah. A bit of a, uh, false, uh, on their, uh, name of their business, uh, family video. I had a lot of people that I know that complained because they were, uh, pushing pornography out of that place. I don't know if people were aware of this or not, but, you know, the aisles were full of it and I had teenagers coming in and they were complaining that, um, this, they were actually making, you know, it's not a family place. So, what I want to know is now that they're out of business, um, I wanted to know if we have more ordinances in place to prevent this from happening. Because I know that there were, in the state of Missouri, there were places that were, uh, along the highway that, uh, some of these pornographers came in and took over, uh, places in certain of these cities. And that was a while back and we haven't been able to push them out. So, I would just like you to take a look at that. And the other thing was, um, I know in the city of Saint Louis, they have, uh, the, uh, Drag Queen at the public library. And, um, I want you to take a look at that, make sure that that doesn't happen here in Maplewood. Another thing that I, uh, was, had on my mind was, um, you know, I ran a successful business for twenty years, I'm retired now, but just to fill you in on some of my expertise so I can help you with this situation, but, you know, you have to think out of the box sometimes. You know, I, um, did very well in economics and, um, actually ran a successful bookstore for twenty years in the midst of Amazon putting every bookstore out of business. So, I can help you with things like that. There are certain things like, uh, I call about thinking out of the box is that most people will think that taxation is the way to go on certain issues, but, um, if you haven't read, there's a good book to read. It's called Progress and Poverty by Henry George. He was an economist a long time ago. And, uh, taxations are always penalties. They're penalties against the business, they're penalties against the people. But there's a way to do it and Vancouver actually tried Henry George's principle and they went from being a broken city to actually flourishing. And then, somebody got it in their head to not do it anymore and they, they fell into disrepair again and then they got it back again. They started those principles again. There's actually a Henry George organization that can help you. Basically, one of the things they do is they, they tax undeveloped land as if it were developed. This is just one of the ideas in these principles. And, um, what it does is it forces the owner of that property instead of sitting on it and actually benefiting by all the progress going around by doing nothing. And then they end up selling that property off. It forces them to develop their property and that increases the development in the community and increases the, the revenue. So, there are, there are ways to increase revenue without, uh, increasing taxation. And I don't think the citizens of Maplewood are going to stand for another tax. We've just been hit with a, uh, property tax that really was pretty steep for a lot of people. So, we need to have some creative ways and, um, you know, I can come up with some creative ways for you, but I didn't want to bring that up today. Those, those are the ones that I want to bring up today, so I would just like you to think about those things. And especially the fact of, uh, being three million dollars in debt, I know that Barry just kind of came into this, but there were people on the, on the committee, the council people here that actually saw it happen because they've been out here for a while, so maybe you can identify why it happened so that it doesn't happen again. And look for ways, uh, to, uh, get out of the situation. You know, sometimes, uh, when people come up and ask for, sometimes you just have to say no. Until you say, okay, well, let's table your project and you come back after we get out of the debt. And the other thing about that railroad crossing is that, um, you know, there are other ways to get to that area. I mean, there's an underpass under the railroad tracks just right down the street. So, if you have to close the railroad tracks, close it. Just plain close it and just use another alternative. You can go down Big Ben, you can go down, you know, go down under the railroad tracks, down on Greenwood, down there. Until you get the money to, uh, to... So, that's all I have to say.
Okay. The only question I have is with regards to the, uh, family video. We don't have a video store now. I don't think we're ever going to have one, you know, in the, in the future either, so I'm not sure that that's an issue. But that, that's governed by...
The Plan Unit Development Ordinance and that was grandfathered, it was put in before the P E was there. A video store is not permitted there. That doesn't mean one couldn't request to go there in the future. However, the ordinance would need to be amended to allow it. At that point in time, you could look at the particular business coming in.
So, are you saying that our ordinances now do not allow such a thing to happen again?
Uh, I'm saying if, at that location for certain, um, there is restrictions on pornography. I don't, I didn't realize there was an issue with family video. I, I was not, I've never had a complaint, so I didn't even realize that was an issue.
I, I think that was one of the reasons why they wouldn't help businesses. I mean, I walked in there and I walked straight out and I had teenagers in the high school telling me the same thing and they just walked straight out.
Well, the main thing is I just wanted to, uh, you know, if it's a planned unit development and, uh, or conditional use, we have the ability to limit, to, you know, make, uh, stipulations on, on their, uh, operation, so...
Could I get your, uh, address for the record for, yeah, our notes?
Uh, three-five-four-one Commonwealth.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, I think you're all doing a great job, just keep it up.
Is there anyone else that would like to address council in public forum? Moving on, item number nine is announcements.
Well, we do have the Sweet Tooth Tour that's going to be January twenty-fifth between twelve and five and I believe there's still tickets available. Last I looked, there were, for twenty-one dollars.
Okay.
Um, can I add one? Uh, our school district, Maplewood Richmond High School District is going to be hosting three public town halls over the next few months. They are on Wednesday, January twenty-second, Wednesday, February twelfth, and Tuesday, March twenty-fourth in the evening, um, to, uh, talk about, um, pressures on the district because of sustained growth in enrollment. And there, um, is childcare available at those meetings for age three to seven and you can check on the website or their Facebook page to register for the childcare.
Okay. Did you also want to mention our town hall?
Yes. We are having our first in recent memory, um, town hall on Tuesday, January twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth.
From six to seven fifteen PM, right before our, um, city coun, our regular city council meeting. And, um, Laura has been doing a phenomenal job of pushing that out on social media and, um, they, the city has also just put up signs, physical signs around and they're going to be moving them around. So, we are excited about that.
Okay. Any other announcements? Uh, item number ten is the approval of the December tenth city council meeting minutes and the closed session minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any changes?
So, this is where my question was. Sorry, I mixed up minutes and agenda. If I, if I did have like a detail to add to it, should I be, like, email that to Anthony before this or register it now? Like...
I would say this is the first time that, that in, in sixteen years or so. John, what would be the appropriate, uh, procedure to amend the, uh, or, or to add?
Motion to amend the minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the minutes.
I'll second.
What respect? You should identify what respect before you have a second.
By adding, so, and I've never done this before. Um, I'd like to add some detail about the railroad quiet zone piece.
What do you mean? Was it discussed?
Took the words, what would you like to be included in detail?
I would like to include the, um, the, there were two key points from that discussion that, the, that our application for a quiet zone, um, submitted in nineteen ninety-four would not qualify now and that we may have the need to upgrade to four quad gates that would incur a cost to, to maintain quiet zone status.
Okay. We have a, a motion?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes have been amended.
They need to approve the minutes as amended.
Motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are now approved. Karen, you want to start with item number eleven?
Motion to approve a full Sunday liquor license for Carlos Lardizabal, owner of Casa Maya Restaurant located at twenty-seven twenty-six Sutton Boulevard.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any questions? It looks pretty straightforward.
Just out of curiosity, is Casa Maya the same employees from Maya Cafe? Or is it a completely different ownership group?
You're talking about this application or are we talking about the Maya Cafe application?
We're, we're talking...
Casa Maya, which used to be Maya Cafe.
Yeah, we're talking about Casa Maya right now.
We're talking about Del Sur.
So, did...
We're not talking about Del Sur.
Oh, wait a minute. Oh.
So, did Carlos used to be a, an employee of, uh, Maya Cafe?
My understanding is he used to be an employee who, who's running it, purchased it from, uh, Mr. Schober.
Okay.
So, I, I don't know about the rest of the employees, but they're...
I know one of the other employees is not going to be there.
Yeah, I think there's going to be a little bit of a, a little bit of a change, but for the most part, you're still going to have this, at least one person there that has been running it.
Okay. Yeah, people are asking, so, just for the...
I'm guessing this is the same license that they had at Maya Cafe.
Uh, I believe so, yeah. It's a full...
So, it's no different.
Is it the same menu pretty much or do we know?
I don't know that, that any, uh, changes have been proposed. Uh, so, uh, we have a motion and a second. A roll call, please. I'm sorry.
Voice vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? The motion carries. And, uh, move on to item number twelve, please.
Motion to approve a full Sunday liquor license for Christian Lehman of Asador Del Sur Restaurant to be located at seventy-three twenty-two Manchester Avenue.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? We have a representative here if anyone wants to ask any specific questions.
How long before you open?
Uh, we have it planned for around March.
March, okay.
And he answered my question, yes, they'll have vegetarian fare. So, uh...
I'll be, I'll be there in spite of that.
Yeah.
And just so everyone knows, this is the former Reed's American Table location. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number thirteen, please.
A resolution of the city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri, appointing Charles Hinderleiter to the library board and establishing his term of office as expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions?
I, I got a question, not necessarily about this particular appointee, but just about the process for appointing because, um, it's my understanding this position came open as of like November twelfth and someone contacted you a week later, um, but it was already filled per your communication with me. So, I'm just curious, when we have these open positions, is there's not a certain period of time we're leaving open the time period in which someone could apply to be on the, the boards and commissions? How does the process look from...
Well, currently the process is, is, uh, I entertain resumes and people express what, uh, boards or commissions they want to serve on. And then when that opening becomes available, I've filled it mainly because we, ev, in the past, when I've advertised openings on boards and commissions, uh, typically I don't, I, a lot, most of the time, I don't get any responses and so we waste, uh, a couple of months trying to fill, fill that position. I think what you might be suggesting is that we do a better job of advertising, uh, board and commission vacancies.
And then maybe we can, so that I know if I'm trying to, you know, I think there's a lot more interest in the community now in, in participating in the boards and commissions than there used to be. And so knowing that, you know, it's, sometimes it takes a while, like, to get the word out that, you know, I mean, seven days seems like a pretty short turnaround for someone to express interest, but if it's already filled, like, it's going to be, you know, difficult to get people. So, maybe is there a way we could set a certain timeframe so that we know?
I mean, I, I thought there was a meeting where you told us the library position is open, send names. And, and so...
Uh...
So...
The, the only thing that happened there is that I, I already had the resume and I, I was, I didn't have the contact information and I was able to get that, so I, I went ahead and, uh, went forward with the, with the nomination. It's, it's unusual that we get more than one. I would love to have multiple, uh, you know, applications for each of the...
I mean, I, I think somebody else tried to apply.
Yeah, I, I, I have that information, uh, but that, that was, uh, uh, at the, at the time, uh, I'd already made a commitment to the first person that had submitted a resume and therefore I didn't entertain any other applications. But, you know, I don't have a problem with...
Going forward.
Yeah, so the idea then would be to advertise the board position, uh, or commission position. Would you do that at a, obviously we do it typically at a council meeting.
Well, can we, I mean, and this is maybe a question for John or for Anthony, but can we post that on our social media site to let, let the community know, hey, city hall, post something? Like, there's a board opening or a commission opening? Is that...
Here's the deadline?
I mean, and then a deadline? I think that would, because I do think there are a lot more people interested now.
It sounds like you got this resume before the position was even open.
Yeah, that...
And so...
So, going forward, I think that would be great, like, to, and it's nothing, it's nothing about the person whose resume is here. I, I don't want to make that clear. It's just that the process seems a little confusing. So, if, that would be great if going forward we could...
What I'd also like to see is if people, anyone that's interested in serving on a board or commission, if they would send their resume and which boards and commissions they'd like to serve on.
Well, see, I think, and I think that's the difference, is that you're used to people just sending your resume and saying like, oh, if this ever opens up, I, I want to do this. And I don't think that's what's happening is now we have openings and it's like, hey, it's like a job opening. Hey, we have this opening, anyone interested in this particular board, send me your resume. Do you know what I mean? So, I think it's like a...
They're responding whenever they see an opening.
Like a call for, for available positions.
Send your resume and it'll be on file. You know what I mean?
Well, you know, anytime there has been an opening, typically I try and announce that at a council meeting, but, um, you know, so if, if, uh, if someone sent in their resume and expressed interest in, in serving on particular boards or commissions, uh, you know, typically, in, in the past, I've gone to that file.
Sure, but, but what I'm saying is we're maybe not accessing the community as a whole because people don't know that they're supposed to have submitted it. Do you see what I mean? It's like, now that it's open, you know, circumstances change too. I may not have been able to do it a year ago, but now I can. So, I think it's the idea that when it's available, we can use our social media to post it and that way we can open it up to a wider group of people and then there's a time period by which to submit it. If that's two weeks, four weeks, whatever, I mean, that can be discussed. But then, I think we'll get, I think it'll be a more transparent process and sort of, uh, maybe get a lot more people to be involved.
And my understanding is at this point, uh, there's only one opening, uh, and that's Parks Board?
Parks, yeah. And then we talked, and you might have already worked with the pension board as well.
Yeah, uh...
But that's just going to be a brief.
Yeah.
We want to terminate the pension board and then move on, so...
And that, that person's supposed to get back to me this week, so...
Yeah, the Park Board is the only one that I'm aware of.
Yeah. So, if you know anyone that's interested in serving on the Parks Board, uh, then please have them send their, uh, resume to me. And, uh, we've, we haven't set up deadlines in the past, but, uh, uh, in this case, I'd, it'd be nice to see the, uh, resumes before the council meeting notice the agenda goes out for the next meeting. Because that, to me, that's, you know, we would be voting on it at the next meeting if we have a candidate. And so, as, as long as we have a little bit of time to, uh, accept the resume, resume and review it before we put together the agenda.
So, would it make sense maybe, given how that's only two weeks away, to do it the next one? So that we can give a little bit of more time? I mean, is it imperative to fill that particular position in the next two weeks? I guess that's what I don't, I like, how long has that one been vacant?
The Parks Board one, you mean?
Yeah.
Well, and I mean, you know, should I spend any effort recruiting my neighbors if there's a resume on file that I don't know about?
Well, I'm saying that there's an opening for the Parks Board and I don't have any candidates for it.
Okay.
So, uh, you know, if, if I had someone in mind and, and I was going to automatically assign them, then no, there wouldn't be an opening on the Parks Board. Then the, the, the other, uh, issue with regards to boards and commissions is that we might be creating an alternative position for Design and Review Board and Historic Preservation. Because I do have someone that's interested in serving, but there is not an opening. And so we need, at some point in time, we should probably talk about that too with regards to other boards and commissions.
Sure, we could set that, like, as a discussion item on a future...
We could have a whole work session on boards and commissions.
I was going to say, it sounds like we could probably benefit from a work session about boards and commissions.
That's fine, but, so, um, yeah, you know, and the, the advantage to having alternates is that if someone can't make it, they don't have to feel pressured to make it, but someone else can, uh, participate. And then when there is an opening, then most likely, you know, they would be the first person, uh, in line for that position.
That's an excellent idea for that, like, of the board because that board needs monthly and has its own agendas. They always have action items, businesses and residents moving, so, and you're right, it's a tough board to, to fill, so I think it's a great idea you had with that. I mean, that would be fantastic. It's also hard to find people, requirements for that board.
Okay, so, um...
Did you say design and review?
Anything is a staff, uh, just let us know, we'll take care of any notice if we need to. Just send me an email and we'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, any other discussion with regards to this matter? So, we've concluded that we will talk about it more in the future. But as far as this particular nomination, uh, do we have a...
We already have a motion.
We have a motion in a second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Crater?
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pardini?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Resolution is approved, twenty dash one.
Thank you. Item number fourteen, please.
Resolution of the city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to sign an addendum to master tax exempt lease purchase agreement with U.S. Bancorp, government financing for one million, one hundred ninety thousand, two hundred twenty-six dollars and seventy-two cents.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would you like...
I want to make sure to run into the record that the, uh, total amount of this is going to be one million, one hundred ninety thousand dollars, pardon, one million, one hundred ninety thousand, two hundred twenty-six dollars and seventy-two cents. It'll be financed out of that will be ninety thousand, two hundred twenty-seven dollars, thirty-seven cents. I have to put that in the email to you along with my final document. We got that, that actual, those final numbers, late Friday or early Monday, I can't remember.
Okay. So, this one point, one seven is, uh, the other numbers aren't there.
Actually, one point one-nine.
I see. Okay. And you said the term was...
Six years.
Six years, okay. Uh, are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pardini?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Crater?
Yes.
Resolution is approved, twenty dash two.
Item number fifteen, please.
Bill sixty-one thirty-four, an ordinance of the city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri, amending ordinance five-five-seven-three as amended, chapter fifty-six zoning, division six N B, Neighborhood District, division seven C B, Community Business District, division seven, section fifty-six dash two-eleven, C B one district and division eight, A B, Arterial Business District.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Jenny, would you like to? Do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Just now.
I just...
So, one thing, I don't, I think there were a couple of people missing when we discussed this, but one thing I had noted when we were looking at it and discussing it is that, um, that in the Neighborhood Business District, um, laundry, like self-service laundry was removed. And then also in the Community District, uh, the next one, I had a question about that one, actually, is...
Did you want on the Neighborhood?
Well, so...
Do you want that, because it's...
Well, my question was, I feel like in, in a conditional use, like, we took it out of permitted uses and I get that because I think there are factors to consider, like, environmental and, and odor, but, um, I just feel like given the, the purpose of... I just feel like given the, the purpose of the neighborhood business district, it seems like, um, in the fact that we do have a pretty high rental population, in my experience renting, you don't usually get laundry, so you have to go somewhere. That just to remove it altogether would maybe be a disservice to the community, at least leaving it as an option in the conditional would be nice.
And I just let you know, if the council wants to make that recommendation, the, the planning commission is having, and the city are having issues with the wash house right now. It is one hundred percent odor and we went through the actual zoning map.
Right.
It was probably maybe twelve or fourteen neighborhood business properties in town.
Right, right, there's, yeah.
Everyone was immediately adjacent to residential and that's why they decided to avoid that because there's no good way to really mask that. But that was the planning commission's understanding. If the council disagrees with that, we can add it.
Well, and my question was, you know, I, I looked at correspondence that was recently sent to us. Is there no way to mask it or is it just not being enforced by the county? I guess is my question.
The county of, to your first question, there is a way to mask it, but you have to mask it with another odor.
Okay, you can't.
Something more pleasant smelling.
All right.
Laundry smells okay in small doses, not a bad odor, it's just the concentration of the problem. The counties, their quality requirements, and this is per the county inspector, are primarily more for industrial uses. And they still have the same regulations even for retail, so they're strongly acknowledge it, but it still doesn't meet their threshold. The, the best mechanism would have been to essentially vent that to the roof towards the front of the store in some manner as opposed to right out the back. Backyards. Surprisingly, there's only one resident that we've really heard complaints from. I happen to agree with her though, I, and I've told her that, I would not want to open my window and have that smell fourteen hours a day.
But the point is there is a way to do it, right? Like just, it just wasn't done properly there. I guess I'm just saying, because it sounds like it's still in the, um, the next district, but it says if there's retail attached. So does that mean like you can have a laundromat, a self-service laundromat if they off, also offer to do it for you? I didn't really understand what that meant. Um, so it was, uh.
What section?
I like four different.
CB.
Yeah, the one that comes next. Um, in conditional, there was, um, where was it? Retail dry cleaning or laundry services or facilities not to include self-service laundry or dry cleaning plants without retail services. So that's what was my question. Does that mean you can have self-service as long as there's, I don't know what constitutes a retail service?
Well, that was probably taken from permitted into conditional.
It was.
And, um, yeah, that's what they're looking for. They're looking for some sort of retail cleaning. I mean, we could again modify that language as well if, if the council would like to do so. This is, um, this is just what the planning commission was thinking and they were also concerned again based on their prior complaint.
Well, no, and I, and I get that. I guess I'm also trying to balance that against the fact that there may, you know, is that if we can, I mean, just because it's a conditional use doesn't mean it would necessarily be approved, right? Because you would have to meet those standards, like there is no odor, there is, you know, or there's a way you've done it. So I guess my point was just leaving it in at least in conditional so that it's an option, but.
Raising canes, we put, we may have put a scrubber system on there with obviously to do so, so they didn't have the, at least the minimum, the odor would minimize the.
Right.
All the time. Put in similar restrictions if that's what you'd like to do. Honestly, as long as it's conditional, we still have that ability. We just don't have a situation where it's permitted.
Right, and I, and I agree with that. It should not be permitted. I hundred percent agree with that.
And just a real clear clarification, when they mean dry cleaning plants without retail services, they bait, there's places that do wholesale dry cleaning. And you wouldn't want those and those.
Right, that's why I wasn't clear with that.
Yeah, that's all, that's all that means.
Self-service too, though. It says self-service laundry.
Not to include self-service.
Laundry without retail services.
Yeah, that is kind of.
I just didn't know what retail service is meant.
To tweak that language, uh, I mean, even, even American cleaners kicks their stuff off.
Right.
With the larger point.
And I, and I'm not opposed to that language in that district. I mean, I see that, when I look at the goals of that district, I just, um, I just know too, I've had, had someone actually randomly tell me they saw some older gentleman like walking across Maplewood with his laundry. And I mean, it's just, and it doesn't mean someone's going to open a place there, but just leaving the option open, I think, as a service to our community.
You're, I just want to make sure I'm clear.
In neighborhood.
We're trying to say to make it as a conditional use.
Yes.
Are we looking at self-service laundry facilities?
That's what it said. It used to say that in permitted.
In, in CB, right?
No, I'm talking about neighborhood business. We removed it.
Okay.
We removed self-service laundries and retail dry cleaning establishments completely. And I get it shouldn't be a permitted use, but you would just move that language to conditional use. Would be what I would.
As long as it's conditional, I have no objection or not, no concerns if the council wants to do that, that's.
I'm, I'm good with that. We have fifty-one percent rental.
But, and.
With conditional use governed the way that they do their business, so.
So we're moving this one over to the, no, it's not moving it, it's just to add it back in.
Is that a concession? Then I should add that?
Having dealt with, uh, the wash house, I, it, it very well might, you know, I don't have a problem making a conditional use. It'll probably be prohibitive to, uh, you have to establish standards and then there is equipment out there. I think it works with activated charcoal. And you have to replenish it and it's costly. And I, you know, but, uh, if someone wants to do business and they can make it work without the nuisance, then I have no problem with it.
Yeah, hence the conditional use.
Right.
Okay, so I will add this, this use to, um, and it'll be on the next. Email a similar thing in case there's any other changes where that should highlight it. Assuming you're okay with all these highlights.
Yeah, yeah, that, all the ones that we.
I did have the question. I, we, I note took out the clause that said, um, other uses that were immoral, which was what I asked. Do we need to keep in other uses that are of illegal nature or is that just understood? In the prohibited uses?
What page?
In, um, sorry, so.
That, that's going to be language where we wouldn't permit it anyway.
So it doesn't need to be, all right, okay.
If it's prohibited, we're not going to add it. So it's just, that was just an additional language and comment was, why do we even have it in there?
Well, the immoral part, because that's subjective, but yes.
Not going to allow something illegal anymore.
Right, that's what I, I just wanted to clarify. All right, perfect. I didn't have any other questions.
Or you would need to find a new zoning administrator.
Okay, so, uh, is there any further discussion with regards to the zoning, uh, issue?
Is she making a motion to amend? Do we have to do that?
Motion to amend, I mean, as long as you understand it, I know exactly what to do. I'll get it, it'll be fine.
So the amended bill comes to you, so you don't need to make a motion at this point in time.
Okay, okay.
Anthony, amend the bill and bring it back to you.
You guys, you'll notice the ten percent in there, I talked, remember we talked.
Yeah, yeah.
He said that's not a bad idea, that's kind of a, a trend. And if for some reason somebody comes in with a little more, we can make an amendment at this point, but he thought that was a good idea to include that because the craft, you know, hard alcohol is kind of becoming a form of a thing. He even said some of it's kind of canned, where you can buy like a gin and tonic in a bottle now, or in a can, so.
Yeah, yeah.
That's blasphemy. Gin and tonic in a can.
I'll definitely add that. Sounds like a subjective matter.
Yeah, I suppose.
Okay, so no further action is needed on that item?
We need to vote on it. Do we, well, we made a motion.
And we seconded it.
So there's a motion on the table for the existing bill?
Yeah, so.
So how do we drop it off the table?
Are we taking it back off the table?
No, you, I think somebody, you can still approve it for first reading.
Okay.
And then we'll bring back to you the amended bill.
On the third reading, that's right.
We just need to vote on it right now.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading, please.
Bill sixty-one thirty-four, an ordinance of the City Council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri, amending ordinance five-five-seven-three as amended, chapter fifty-six zoning, division six NB Neighborhood District, division seven CB Community Business District, division seven, section fifty-six dash eleven, CB one District and Division eight AB Arterial Business District.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The item will move on to its third and final reading at the next meeting. Uh, item number sixteen, please.
Bill sixty-one thirty-five, an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, amending ordinance five-five-seven-three of the Maplewood Code of Ordinances as amended by amending chapter fifty, traffic and motor vehicles, section fifty dash two-four-four municipal parking lot regulations, B Marietta Parking Lot, to add a seventy-two hour parking restriction.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Or is there any discussion? Since my business backs onto, uh, the Marietta lot and so does Jenny's, uh, uh, it, it appears that the parking lot is being used as a personal parking lot for, for certain people. And, uh, it's taking away valuable resources that we have for the city and that's why, uh, we've, uh, that's why this ordinance is on the table here. So, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Second reading, please.
Bill sixty-one thirty-five, an ordinance of the City Council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri, amending ordinance five-five-seven-three of the Maplewood Code of Ordinances as amended by amending chapter fifty, traffic and motor vehicles, section fifty dash two-four-four municipal parking lot regulations, B Marietta Parking Lot, to add a seventy-two hour parking restriction.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion will move on to its third and final reading at the next meeting. Item number seventeen is a Tree City USA discussion. This was prompted by the, uh, removal of the trees on Anna, uh, in front of the Maplewood vid, Village Apartments. And, uh, we realize that even though we're a Tree City USA city, we don't, we don't have, uh, uh, much of an enforcement mechanism to prevent, private individuals and businesses from removing trees from their, uh, their properties. There are, uh, tree ordinances that are, Webster and, and Clayton have tree ordinances that, uh, address these issues. And, uh, so the first question is, uh, is anyone or everyone in favor of establishing an ordinance to prevent the, um, wanton removal of, of trees?
Yes.
Yes.
On private property? So if I went to take down one of my maples, you're telling me that the city could sue me because I took it down?
No, it, it wouldn't sue you. The pri, we'd establish a process like we do with historic preservation for demolition of buildings.
Right.
It, we would have to meet a certain, uh, criteria with regards to size and, and maturity. And then, you know, then the idea is that you'd, you'd make a case for, uh, for its removal and why you wanted to do that.
Um, I'm not in favor of that at all.
What if it's dead? Like, is there criteria? Like if it's dead, you don't, you don't have to go through that process?
Well, we would have to establish the criteria.
Can we see examples of other cities' ordinances?
Yeah, before we make a decision on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're not making a decision right now.
Take down a tree in my backyard if I deem as a homeowner, property owner, see fit. I know we're a Tree City USA, but, you know, there's some, there's something that I feel is going to cause damage to other structures on my property and stuff. And all of a sudden Maplewood says, no, you can't take that down or, you know, what have you, that's going to be a, that'd be.
Yeah, and, you know, having served on the Historic Preservation Commission, you know, we, you know, we'd have to establish some guidelines for, uh, you know, just like we do with Board of Adjustment for hardships. But, uh, there has to be a reason. And, uh, I would think that any viable reason would be, uh, cause to, you know, to be able to take down your own tree. So, uh, but yes.
I, I would gander to look at it.
Yeah, I, I, I think we all need to, but I think the, there's a somewhat of a consensus that, you know, that it, it needs to be looked at.
Make sure, um, I'd already sent an email, I think I copied you on it because we talked about this, that, uh, looking into Webster's. My, my neighbor told me Webster says, you know, for one year after you move in to do homeowner, but then after that, you can do it. But I, I haven't seen the ordinance, so I'm going to get Webster's. And I believe you said Clayton also has a provision?
Yeah, Clayton.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll get some, uh, sample ordinances and email them out.
I'd like to see those as well.
Nope, no question.
Because I've heard those discussed, like you all have.
Yeah.
And the idea of prohibiting a property owner from using their property as they deem fit, including the removal of trees, is a, a danger subject.
My email to Barry and then Tiffany to get the ordinance, I said, I don't know how this is even legal.
Yeah, I mean, you'd be really.
Well, I think it's, it's legal in the same manner that the Historic Preservation, we issue demolition permits for, you know, you, you could use the same argument that you could take down all or part of your house without any type of approvals. And, you know, the criteria obviously is different there. But, uh, we've established a Historic Preservation Commission. I assume it's legal.
Historic buildings, of course, if you identify a building that is historic and the property owner, owner understands that my rights are limited as to how I can modify that historic building or whether or not I can remove that historic building. Because that's the designation. That's a building. In my experience, trees have never been designated as historic. But, but to further your argument, uh, if I went to the city tomorrow to demolish my house, you're not going to deny me that permit. You know what I'm saying? It's my house to demolish. Right?
It.
Would you have had?
Again, I, I'm not familiar enough with the historic preservation ordinance in Maplewood. Typically, there can be reservations as if you have been, if your home has been designated as a landmark or a contributing historic resource, then the ordinance should identify what you can and cannot do with. Right, but if it's not.
They had an order denied.
But would you have had to?
One year, they denied it going back nine years ago, and I overruled them. It's the only time I've ever had to because we were going to be sued and we were going to lose.
Would you have had to purchase?
Yes.
Would you have had to purchase your home knowing that restriction though?
Yes.
Right, so if you've lived there long enough, then you.
It has to be designated in a different, cities approach it differently.
Was that house on Anna and that apartment building where they took the trees down?
You can consent to that designation.
Those trees from.
Majority of the city.
Random property, I was thinking it was out in front, like city tree.
Your deed. Check the recorder.
Right, yeah.
Sell your property. You now understand.
Right, because I know it's subjective to that.
I got you.
Were these on the private property or were they in the use of the property? Yeah, I was thinking that that was, you know, city prep or, you know, the true.
Cities say if you don't consent to it, it can never be.
That he took it down.
And I have to familiarize myself with the historic reservation ordinance. As to the historic structures themselves. But I am not familiar with it. I'm anxious to see Webster. No, I'm, I'm all for a gander at looking at it.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, there's some.
I can just see a little.
I, I think with regards to the Historic Preservation Ordinance, where it's going to come into play more so than it has in the past is, uh, in, in other neighboring communities where they've taken down smaller houses and put up larger houses when there was nothing wrong with the smaller houses except they were too small and not as profitable as, you know, a large, you know, structure could be. So, you know, we might want to revisit that too, to make sure that, uh, and, you know, at the same time, even if they take down the house, then, you know, we have to look at the zoning requirements in terms of lot coverage, in terms of setbacks and things like that. Uh, you know, to prevent that from happening. That's how we prevent it from happening, but what we don't want to do is have people buy a house, tear it down, go through the zoning process and say, hey, you know, I've, you know, I've torn this house down and now I can't build what I want to do. We want to, you know.
No, I know there's reasonable, I buy property in the city of Maplewood that there's a reasonable expectation that I have to follow the zone, the zoning and permitting laws. I'm not arguing that, I'm just, I'm more worried about the tree part of it than anything else because I've got big trees.
And that's why we need to look at the zoning ordinance. And also, uh, there was discussion at Plant, uh, Design and Review Board, and there's a member of Sustainability Commission, uh, that talked about, uh, the prevalence of these, uh, snout houses or, you know, houses that, uh, were mostly garage in the front. And so they're going to be looking at that and they, they very well might be bringing something to us so that we can maintain the integrity of our, you know, street porch house relationship in Maplewood and not make the city look like it was designed only for automobiles. But that's, that's not something that's, they're looking into that.
And to clarify, Mayor, to your point, if it's dealing with a development, I'm certainly familiar with cities that have regulated. that have regulated the number of trees that can be torn down to build a new home on there. So in other words, you can't go in and scrape the property clean and then build a home on there and lose all the, the mature trees. Florson has it. Kirkwood spent years writing ordinances, dealing with that. Still not sure they're satisfied with it, but they've spent years addressing the kind of problem that you're talking about. Similarly, addressing garages being in the front and things of that nature. So I'm sure, if Clayton and Webster, I'm sure have those kinds of ordinances or others. So I misunderstood initially what you're saying about ordering me to, prohibiting me from tearing down a tree just because I decide I don't like it.
Well, yeah, the other part, the other issue with regards to tree removal is the environmental impact. Uh, you know, both with the shading effect, with regards to, uh, uh, you know.
That's the rationale behind the regulation.
Look, and I mean, for me personally, when I said yes, when I so quickly said yes that I would support it, I, I would want this carefully crafted because I don't want to prevent someone like Sean who wants to remove a tree that he's concerned about in his backyard. But I do want to prevent, say, an apartment complex owner that, that owns three blocks and one tree is damaging the foundation of one building. So he cuts down three, three blocks of street facing trees.
I got you.
And completely changes the nature of the community.
I like it.
You know, that.
That makes, that makes more sense.
It's just, you know, that changes the nature of, because it's on the city's side, you know. Somehow it has to be crafted so that it, it, it has a negative effect, if it's having a negative effect on the city.
Right.
Then I think we should have some, some ability to. You know, that's why they took those down? Because I mean, it, it looks brutal.
Yeah, the explanation that was given in Forty South was that, uh.
Going off social media?
Yeah.
I drove, I couldn't believe it when I drove down. I was.
Yeah, it's terrible.
I'm going off social media that was damaging the foundations and the roof. I don't know if it was every tree and every building was being damaged.
There's no basements there. You know, that's, that's what I find hard to, to believe.
I think there's garden units, though. There's gar- I mean, there's the units, I just remember from canvassing. There's that lower than the, so.
And I don't want to prevent e- even that apartment owner if in fact they have three blocks worth of buildings that are being damaged. I don't want to make them continue to suffer that damage, but I think they need to work with us to come up with some other solution to restore, um, the city's, the streetscape.
I, I think that's a valid point that, uh, if trees are removed, we can create an ordinance perhaps to replace those trees.
Yeah.
Uh, so, uh, so at this point, uh, we'll be receiving tree ordinances from, uh, removal ordinances from other jurisdictions and we can do our own research and determine what direction we might want to go. So, uh, next item is the council communication. Is there any council communication?
Um, I had one. Council member Phillips and I attended the last school board meeting, um, in December. And of note to us is that they did have a discussion about traffic in the school zones. And they were going to start, correct me if I'm wrong, um, sort of looking into the intersection at Manchester and Big Bend, the area out front that the resident had identified to them, and then also crossing up where we had asked them to put that median. So they're starting that discussion. We, you know, informed them that any assistance that we could provide to help, you know, create safer spaces for the students and the rest of the community, we would be willing to do. I don't know if that's.
Yeah, I would say that's, that's an accurate, um, review, the discussion, so.
Okay. Is there any other council communication? Um, mayor's report. I was just wondering, uh, Anthony, what would be the timetable be on the, uh, since we're talking about pedestrian crossings, the one in the seventy-three hundred block of Manchester?
Um, going out for bid on engineering contract services due April of this year. That it'll be designed this year, twenty twenty-one will be construction.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I don't have anything else on the mayor's report. Twenty is, uh, item twenty is city attorney's report.
I can do a report, Mayor.
Okay. Item twenty-one is city manager's report.
I, uh, the main thing I'm looking for, we'll go through these briefly, but, uh, the town hall agenda. Um, council member Pardini sent the information. I tweaked it a little bit after talking with, uh, city staff. And I had sent out, uh, just a draft agenda. It's just kind of random thoughts. Um, I haven't heard really, uh, a whole lot back. Uh, council member Pardini's definitely been getting back to me on this. Um, she's got some good ideas on, um, on the gallery walk and the poster gallery walk. So I don't know how the council wants to proceed with this. Um, we can get together a, uh, staff, put together a simple PowerPoint presentation. We can put stuff together for the mayor, council members that may want to pass this out, if they want staff to do some speaking. Kind of, I'm just wanting to make sure. We've got two weeks. We want to make sure this is, goes off how the council would like. I'm looking for some direction here. The only one I went to was, I've been to one town hall meeting, it was Webster's, and it was, uh, much more of a kind of.
It was more topical.
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
Big topic. They separated tables. Um, I don't know if you want to get a group of maybe a few council members that would work with staff, and then we'll kind of keep everybody up to date as we're going through. But maybe kind of tough to get some ideas that we can get through if we flush it down smaller. I don't, it's really whatever the council wants, we'll do. But we have two weeks. I want to make sure we're prepared.
I liked the list that you have. I looked at the agenda. I just thought we may need a little more time to go through it. It seemed like a lot of things to cover in that second section.
I tried to cut stuff out. I just tried to throw those.
I liked it, though.
I would, personally, I'd, I'd do the first two things, um, and then discuss maybe at our next town hall meeting that we'll do like this poster gallery walk to kind of give us feedback on, on things. Uh, I, I just don't think you're gonna, I mean, fifteen minutes. I mean, if four people show up, great.
We have.
If thirty people show up, that's going to be.
So you're thinking the welcome remarks, the state of city activities and upcoming activities?
Yeah, yeah. And then talk about the next town hall meeting being a, hey, we're gonna, we want to, you know, talk about comprehensive plant, plans, envisioning, and just, you know, uh, again, have some input from the public on that. Use that town hall meeting for that and maybe a Q and A afterward.
And just for, just for the record, four people, you were saying is, is good, uh, to.
Oh, no, I'd like to have thirty people, but you're not going to do that in fifteen minutes.
But your, your point was that if we have four people, then we can get, cover a lot more ground. Not great. It's, you know, we only have four people.
I mean, the benefit of, of doing some kind of gallery walk is that it's an opportunity. It's like, it's a little bit more participatory and it's a fast way to get input from a lot of people because they're just, um, writing things on like poster papers that are set up. But then also each poster could have like one or two council members at it. So they have the opportunity to have like a small group discussion. But then also you don't have, you, like, people can have the opportunity to participate, but you don't have the opportunity for like a, a big, like, back and forth or turning into like a, asking, um, it, it can, um, get a lot of feedback in kind of like a measured orderly way without turning into like, uh, citizens yelling at us for thirty minutes.
I guess I would rather cut down what we talk about and have the citizen input piece and then maybe schedule another one, really in February even, and, and do the other half of it. So I guess that would be my vote, because I do like the citizen input piece and I think that it would be helpful for us in like setting some goals of things we want to do to hear from people sooner rather than later, but.
Yeah, I, I think the, the idea that we had discussed, um, with Anthony about the town hall was to get the participation aspect of it. And, you know, and how to achieve that in a short amount of time rather than having, you know, the, the presentation aspect of it being the key.
I, I have no problem with a gallery walk, just an FYI. I just don't know if we can fit all.
You're right.
Three of these things in one meeting.
I thought that there were some items that we could, didn't have to be in the presentation.
I, I mean, I personally, I would, I would maximize the, the gallery type of time because I think people, for the public, are, are much more comfortable interacting with us more informally in a poster walk. A lot of people aren't comfortable speaking out, you know, when we're sitting up here like this. So, you know, I'd be all in favor of reducing the formalities and, and increasing the, the poster time.
But I do, I do like all these topics. I would like them to all be discussed. So if it's possible to split them.
We could really cut these down. Again, it was kind of just.
Yeah, no, I like it.
What might the council be interested in?
Yes, and I am interested.
So we just threw everything and.
Yeah.
We can clearly, I, I know council member Wood brought up item number one, uh, the state of the city. And that was really, that was a nice, and council member Pardini was at that meeting as well. It was neat to see your community. And so I think handing out that, that sheet is fine. But any of these other ideas, um, we could absolutely slash those and get that down, cut it in half or cut it by two-thirds. Just have, you know, the mayor do an extended discussion briefly. We can put a simple presentation together and we could go right into the, uh, gallery walk if people like.
Yeah, we could spend more time on the gallery. If, I mean, it shouldn't take too long to bring people up to speed about what's going on. I don't think that would be too long of a presentation.
Are we not going to allow any Q and A during that period? Is it just going to be a presentation?
Or maybe the questions can be when the gallery walk?
Yes, yeah.
That's what I think.
The idea.
Okay. I don't see that, I don't see that in this gallery walk here, but.
Will be there, um, along with, I believe.
Doesn't say.
Number as well. So, I mean, if any resident does have questions, they should get the questions answered right there on the spot.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, I'm all for the gallery. I, if we spend most of the time on it, that's fine. Um, we can pare down the other two very easily. There's another discussion.
Um, what did you all, I'm curious about the, like, the topics for the gallery walk. We can decide like how many kind of stations we want and who's going to be standing at those stations? So like is, are all the topics you think you want on here? Is there, like, is there anything missing?
I think we can put, I mean, I had a thing, but I didn't want to add any more thing, you know. I mean, I had a thing to the presentation thing. So, but I, I, we're going to do other, we're going to do other town halls. So I, you know, I was just, I myself wanted, and I mentioned this to Anthony, but just wants, um, an explanation of what the boards and commissions do and what they actually are working on. And, you know, that way people know if they want to be on one or not. And it's a good captive audience for us to, if they come for the, you know.
Yeah, that's great.
For the town hall, we can, you know, let them know. But I didn't know, then that's going to put more time into, you know, explain, explaining all the different.
Could that be a takeaway? Uh, you know, one feature that indicates which, what our boards and commissions are.
And, and I guess we have us wrapping up at seven oh five, but I guess in my opinion, I, I'm not opposed to taking the full hour and a half. I mean, I don't need a break in between the two. And when we went to that one in Richmond Heights, they didn't. They just continued on. It was a shorter meeting that they had.
If you have a captive audience, there's nothing to say you can't just postpone a meeting and discard it or cancel it.
And just keep going. And that gives you.
Sorry, we're done. See ya.
Well, and that gives you another twenty-five minutes already if you assume you're going to seven thirty.
We could also add, um, a poster on, like, depending on how many people, um, are standing at each, we could add a po- a whole poster on boards and commissions so that if people, and that person could be prepared with like the handout, but then also kind of gather any questions that people have about.
Somebody that knows a lot about it.
This looks like information overload.
Board, I even don't know.
No, this, and I.
You have a, you have an hour and a half.
Right.
And you're gonna, you know, you're, you're trying to get all this stuff done in that period of time. It's just, you, you're much better focusing on some key topics and the boards than, you know, trying to ram all this to our citizens in an hour and twenty minutes, hour and thirty minutes. I mean, it needs to be a longer.
I, maybe that's.
I mean, to be.
What we can determine which groupings make the most sense and then set a series. I mean, the idea was to.
Especially for a first town hall meeting. I don't want to.
Maybe what you do is.
Blow people away.
I love all the ideas. You talk, you briefly discuss whatever the six items you're going to do with your poster boards. And you briefly talk about those and then you disperse into the individual groups.
Well, and I'll note, when we went to Richmond Heights, they had three topics that they, they were presentations. So they had three presentations. One was the Heights, one was the program the police was doing. And I don't, oh, no, it was two. And then the city manager gave an update, like a state of the state. That, that was it. It wasn't super long. Um, so I agree. And if we are committed to doing several of these, then that makes sense to just divide it up.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's a wonderful idea.
I do want five minutes to talk about the senior commission. I need to get members and I need to get started on that.
That is fine.
So that would be a, a really good opportunity for me to do that. So I, yeah, I'll need.
I think we should take, I mean, Richmond Heights, there's three things. They have two presentations, a state of the city, and then they do a, um, you know, like a poster gallery walk or something like that. I think that's.
They were pretty in-depth presentations, so we may, we may have a few more things that are shorter.
Right.
But.
Yeah, I, I don't think you're, you lose your audience if you have too much at one meeting.
So would it be okay for a couple of us to work with Anthony on refining what topics are on here?
And then send, getting it out to everybody?
Sure.
Yeah.
And then we can just, uh, as we update it, we will send.
Let us know.
Updates, but we'll send occasional updates so everyone's aware. And then if you have concerns.
If we're going to be at a station, I want to make sure I know the latest.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
As long as I have probably seven minutes and twenty-three seconds to deal with the senior commission.
You get four minutes and nineteen seconds.
Well, I must say boards and commissions could be at some town hall. So maybe that's the next one. You know, you can briefly discuss.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you can't.
Think it'd be a little much.
And where, when everyone starts getting mad, we're, we're going under the city attorney.
He'll have his own board.
It's really.
I was thinking we could just go to seven thirty and then like quietly start the meeting. They don't realize we've started the meeting. It's like tricking all these people into coming to a city council meeting.
Well, I'd like to be a part of that conversation that goes through the.
Is there anything else in the city manager's report?
Uh, just the tennis court retaining wall. Um, I, I'm referring to this wall that basically backs that fronts Manchester. We had replaced a similar wall on Lomire near the skate park. That wall was in much better condition. We had good success with keeping the historic wall. And it was also across the street from a similar wall near the library. Um, we got bids for this one. They came in at, uh, three hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. I believe, and don't, please don't quote me on this, I believe I can get around a wall for maybe two-ten. And it could be a very similar wall. If you looked kind of by the quick trip, you could see where the school had to do some replacements when the quick trip came in there. If you're just panning it, looking, looking for the difference, you can obviously pick it out. But we can get a very similar wall, a modern construction. That's going to save us about a hundred thousand dollars. And to me, to me, it's insane to pay that much for a retaining wall. But I just wanted to make sure the council's on the same page. Um, we could throw that money into the actual tennis court itself.
Has that, has that wall been designated as historic or? I don't know if I have to go to a commission and tear this one down.
Is there a tree?
A tree in front of it? Does it have a tree in front of it?
A third of that wall is also hidden by the tennis court.
Exactly.
So that's.
Yeah, I mean, it's not going to look bad. It's still going to be a painting wall.
You've got my, okay.
I'm not hearing any major opposition. I'm going to rebid with a similar wall. That should be a lot cheaper.
Yes, please.
Uh, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no need to hold a closed session, can we have a motion for?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.